February the 4th, and this is the Committee of the Whole Administration and Finance for the Township of Edersburg Cardinal. And this in fact is budget meeting number four of the 2021 budget cycle. And we do have an agenda, a good briefing package here this evening. Just before I call the motion to approve the agenda, I've been through this agenda myself. Does anybody want to consider changing some of the, I'm going to say items that might be dealt with more quickly to different spots on the agenda? Anybody got any suggestions there? I was thinking of maybe moving D, E, and F. We might move them a little bit faster, but.
Do them first, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I was just thinking if anybody, if anybody has had a real good close look at them, they may not be that contentious. They may not get them out of the way. Say pardon?
They're not that awkward.
Not that awkward?
Why don't we just get them over with? Get them done right away.
Okay, so, so what we'll do, we'll just reorder them a little bit so the D, E, and F sort of come at the beginning. And so I'm going to call for a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the slight reordering of the issues. So D, E, and F come first. You're moving that? Okay, very good.
Yes.
Okay. Any other further discussion? If not, I'm going to call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And so now I'm at item number three on the agenda, which is disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening?
None.
None declared and minutes will so reflect. And item number four on the agenda is business arriving, arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting. And the minutes of that meeting were circulated. That was in fact budget meeting number three. Now, does anybody have any, anything to bring forward from that meeting? If not, I'm just going to move right on. So I don't hear anything coming forward. All right, so then I'll move to item number five on the agenda, which is the action and information items. So we'll deal with 5D first, which is the draft waste collection and recycling budget. So I just need a minute to dig out my briefing note. And it is in fact page 58 or 59, actually the two pages, 58 and 59. Am I got it right? No.
Page 51.
What is it again?
Page 50 and page 51.
50 and 51. My mistake. So we'll go to page 50 and 51. And on page 50 and 51, we have the draft waste collection and recycling budget. And we see from the briefing note that a slight increase, well, I can call it slight increase 15.5% due to the CPI increase in the waste collection and the bin contract. And the stirtship Ontario recycling allocation is decreased by almost 5,000. But the staff is not recommending any increase in the bag price. So you see the details on page 51. Are there any questions there? Or if not, I'm just going to look for consensus to have this one go forward to the next draft. Counselor?
Yes, I have a couple, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Through the chair to, I would assume to Melanie or the CAO. I'm just a little curious on the, on the revenues line number 4211, big sales. Our actual was 308,000, but yet our, our 21 budget is, is down at 285,000. Was, can you explain that to me as to why we didn't leave it at around the 300,000 mark? We're pretty sure we'll probably get 300,000 this year. But was there something abnormal happen with that 308?
To the CAO?
CAO or Treasurer?
Thank you. I will, I will look to speak to that and the Treasurer can supplement if I, if I'm incorrect. But the, the increased revenue this year is, we believe is attributed to the more people being at, at home due to the pandemic, generating more garbage and more sales. And we're bringing it back down with a little bit of an increase in projected revenue as we anticipate that, you know, probably end of, end of March, April, that more people will be returning back to, to, to a little more normalcy.
Okay, so you're attributing the, the big increase in revenue in 2002 to people at home?
In 2020 for people being at home basically from mid-March onward really, for the most part.
Counselor?
Yeah, I have one, I have one more, but I'll, thank you. It, it just seems like a, like a quite a, quite a decrease.
Compared to 308?
Yeah, over 20,000 compared, but anyway, I'll, I'll accept that, I'll accept that answer. And I, going down to the, there was a 5%, this is on line item 5326, which is the contract collection. There, there was a 5% increase built into 2020. And then there's also a 10% increase built into 2021. I just want to, to confirm that, if that is correct.
Thank you. Through the, through the chair, if you recall, in, in our 2020 budget, we, we had negotiated with Waste Connections. We renegotiated that contract, which included a 5% increase in 2020 with a 10% increase in 2021.
And is that firm now?
That, that is, that is firm and it will be firm until February 2022 when the contract is filed.
So it's, so it's 369 that we see in front of us. Is that the exact amount of the new contract then?
I, I, I would say that that is reasonably close to, to what that contract will be.
The reason I'm asking is because, and I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask the question anyway. In 2020, our actual expenditure was 312. So a 10% increase on that would be 31,000, which would take it up to 343, not 369.
Yeah, through, through, through the chair, I believe that there is still one more invoice that still has to be, be logged. So I think we're at, I think we'll have, what, we'll be at 334-ish? Is that, is that correct, Mel?
That is correct. There's still one more bin, bin invoice as well as roadside collection invoice. That would, would put that up, both of those line items up in 2020.
Okay, all right. So the 2020 numbers that we're seeing are not the actuals. They're one invoice, one month short.
There, there, there's still that invoice to, I don't think it's been.
That sounds reasonable, wasn't it?
Yeah, just for my own clarification, picking up where Counselor Cameron was with respect to bag increases. Was there a bag increase this year and was it for the whole year? Or meaning 20 or 2020? Or was it in 2019?
I'll confirm with the Treasurer, but there was no bag increase in 2020. I believe it was in 2019 that we raised that to 225?
I believe the bag price in 2019 was raised to 250 a bag. So we're $25 for a package, but there was no increase in 2020.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so, Counselor?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. So are we seeing in 2022 then up to February, we'll have 405,000 roughly out of 10%, 369? Is that right?
Potentially, so through the chair, yeah, we, we would, we would have two, two, two months in, in 2022.
Okay, but the total would be 405,000. I guess we'll prorate that. Is that how we're going to do it?
No, no, our budget is done on a yearly basis. The CAO is just indicating that the contract that we have will extend two months past the year end.
Correct.
But the 2021 number will be 369.
It's 369. My apologies for any confusion on that.
Okay, so, Counselor?
Yes, just one more, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And again, I'm just a little, I see the, under the partnership program, there was no, there was no expenditure. I should say there was, there was no expense in 2020. Are we, are we anticipating that we are going to spend 2,500 in 2021?
So through, through, through the chair, if you recall, for several years, the township has participated in that donate to dump?
Yes.
Dump to donate. So naturally with the pandemic, that, that, that program was, was not in place in 2020. We, we anticipated that, that council would like to probably participate in that in 2021 if it's, if it's something that can be done.
So this is the product on gamble and?
No, this, this was typically.
Greenfield?
No, the Scales.
Oh, yeah.
The program at the Saturday where they do the, the pickup, so. And so, so I guess through the chair, if, if, if committee would prefer not to have that in right now or, or leave it in for right now. But that's what it is, it's there for.
I'd like to leave it in.
So, yes.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so I think we've had a good discussion of that one. And I think have we got consensus that we can move this one on to the final draft or the next draft of the budget?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not happy with the revenue number frankly, still. I mean, I know Counselor, the both, two counselors have questioned it, but like, I don't know where we get the idea that we think we're going to return to normal. Like, if you look at, well anyways, we don't need to get into the details of it, but we're not going to be anywhere near normal. People are going to be at home. If they're generating more garbage last year, they're going to generate more garbage this year.
Well, the way, the way I took the, the way I took the explanation was that there were two sort of two factors at play. Number one, people were at home, but in the initial stages of being at home, they made major cleanups. And maybe those, maybe those cleanups won't occur again if they, if they've cleaned out all the messes, I don't know.
Closets are empty now, so.
Hey, what's that?
The closets are empty now.
And the cellar and the garage.
That's true though. I went five times in 2021.
Sorry, Mr. Bradley. Didn't you walk back in here? There's, and I know what the argument is. Go ahead.
If we, okay, so the budget's saying we're going to get 285. If we get 308, what are we going to do with the extra money?
I don't believe it's much. Well, if I may through, through the chair, yeah, there's, there's already a, there's a deficit of about $77,000.
Yeah, so it'll reduce the deficit, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
I think the. Well, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bradley.
So I don't know why we wouldn't, you know, predict, like, if the deficit gets reduced, we don't have to spend so much money, right? We're, I mean, we'll spend less than, we'll run less than the 76.9, that's the deficit.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're taxing for the deficit.
That's right. We're, we're going to tax for this money.
Yeah.
So it behooves us, I believe, to be as tight and as close as possible. And I don't know what the factors are that went into the 308. Like, I don't have data to look at, well, where did they get sold? Was there a big increase in the numbers of bags per house? Nobody has any of that stuff. So I don't know why we would pick 285. That's a number out of the air as far as I'm concerned.
So, so, so I, I expect that the Treasurer, do you want to comment on that?
Certainly, meaning no disrespect to, to Mr. Bradley.
You can disrespect, I don't care about that.
No, no, I'm not wanting to be disrespectful, but when we're budgeting, it would be actually not very physically responsible to overestimate our revenues and then have a shortfall and not have that money to pay for the expenditures even more so than what we have now.
Can I interrupt please for a moment?
I'd like to finish my comment if I could.
Okay, go ahead.
So usually what we tend to do is try to create a budget value based on a five-year average to try to normalize the, the, the usual revenues that we have, taking into consideration there was bag increases. So that's what we've tried to do. And by all means, if council or committee thinks that we should inflate that revenue line and not tax for the amount, we're, you know, that's not where our staff would recommend, but you guys have that option for, for sure to make that amendment to, to the budget and not tax for that amount. It, it's not probably advisable, but if, if you're really strongly thinking that we're going to still come out with the same number of revenue as, as 2020, which was an exceptional year, then you're optimistic.
Thank you.
Bradley?
Move on, Mr. Mayor, please.
What's that?
We can move on.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Mel, when you, through the chair to the, to the Treasurer, Mel, when you get to the 285, and it was the 275 last year, was the 275 an average of the five years previous?
Yes, typically our budget numbers try to look at, at trending. It's difficult, you know, always to know. Things change all the time. Growth changes all the time, you know, that kind of thing. But that's, that's the premise, what, what we build a revenue sport. Most times we like to kind of underestimate our revenues on, in a lot of the departments because it's user driven and we don't know what drives that specifically from year to year.
So can I follow that? Yeah, so, so Mel, does that, that mean that you didn't pick the number out of nowhere? You actually did it off the statistics from the five years previous?
No. No, it says right here that the 275, which is an increase of 41, was projected based on 2019 sales. That's in the 19, that was what we looked at last year. So when we created the 20 budget, it was based on spools. We're creating the 21 budget, it's based on 285.
So in fairness, I, thank you, but I asked the Treasurer for clarification, I wish I had put the 275.
Okay, so I don't know where we are here. Just seems to me that, that the, there's a fair amount of issue around the 285 as possibly being too low of an estimate for revenues. Is there a will around the table to, let's say, increase that estimate by, let's say, 10,000? Is there a will around the table to do that?
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I worked it out quickly. And if we put 308, 710 into the 21 budget line instead of the 285, it'll reduce the deficit down to 53, 231, 176, approximately just 20,000.
But here's the question, in view of the fact that, you know, that the Treasurer has indicated that they prefer to kind of be a bit conservative on their revenue estimates. Do you think that it would be wise, in view of what we've heard as the explanation for the increase to 308, increased revenue to 308, do you think it would be wise to put in that, to expect to receive that same amount of revenue again this year? Would that be a wise and, a wise move?
I'm not sure if you, if you want my answer on it, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure it would be a wise move, but I, I, I would like to see 285 bumped up. Your suggestion was 10,000. That'd be 295. I think I'd be comfortable with that, with that figure.
I'd like to hear some more discussion around increasing that by some amount. I'm suggesting 10.
And we want to reduce it by 66, and is that right? If we go up 10?
Would, it would, it would reduce the deficit in that cost center by 10?
Yeah, down to 66.
Down to 66.
Yeah.
That would be the effect. Can I have a little bit more discussion? Mr. Bradley, do you want to weigh in on this one? Mr. Robertson?
Nothing from you yet.
The only comment I would have is that I understand the concept of, of estimating the revenue a little bit lower than what it might be to provide protection. But on the other side of the coin, by undoing that, you increase taxation.
Yeah, I understand.
So we as a committee have to assess the trade-off of the risk of blowing the revenue estimate against the increase in the taxation. We have a history, I'm not talking about this council, but as a province and as a country, we have a history of just going out, raise taxes, go out, raise taxes because we don't effectively either estimate revenues effectively or control the money we get effectively or whatever. Do you ever see a tax decrease? Never. So that's my comment in the sense that I'm trying to seek a balance, an appropriate balance.
Okay, so the issue on the table is, do we, do we increase that revenue line by some amount? That's the issue. I just want to hear discussion focused on that particular issue. Mr. Robertson, I haven't heard from you.
Mr. Robertson, you're on, you're on mute.
We're, we're a long ways out of the COVID mess. And just tonight there, we're saying like, there's a, there's a problem again with the, with the vax, or the, the shots coming from the various, for the various companies that are supplying them. And another one backed out again today and reduced the supply. So I think, I think this is going to go on for a long ways into 2021. You know, our, our delay in our staying at home. My daughter, my daughter works at, at CIO and they've told her, there's no way they're, they're even letting them back in before, before June. And that may change again too. So I, I think it's, I think it's conservative, it'd be conservative to at least go with your 10 that you suggested, or maybe even a bit more.
More discussion?
I have one more comment, Mr. Mayor. Like, if you look at the statistics, Canada has vaccinated about 2.7 persons per hundred.
Hang on, hang on. I, I don't want to get into the COVID situation. We all.
The comment, if you let me finish, the comment is simply that at that level, we, we, we won't see anything until at least 2022 in terms of normalcy.
The issue is, does that translate into revenue? That's the issue.
No, I know that.
Okay.
Yeah, so through the chair, and it's just more of a, somebody can help me out, make sure that I get the process of this right. If, if we go by what the Treasurer suggests and we, and we go by a $10,000 increase in, in revenue for the budget this year, and it, and it ends, and we tax for the 76, and we end up getting more revenue than we did, all it does at the end of the year is, is reduce what that deficit would have been at, at the end of the year. And if there's a surplus, the surplus goes, goes back in for next year. And if there's a deficit, we end up taxing next year to offset the deficit, correct?
Not necessarily, because some budget lines, in some, and I, I'll turn to the Treasurer in a minute to get to the detail of this because I don't have the, I don't have the reserve or the reserve accounts in front of me. But is this, is this one of the places where a, an, an overage of revenue over expenditures would be transferred into an operational reserve or isn't it?
Through the, through the chair, this particular department does not have an operating reserve for any overages or deficits. It's just included in the overall budget.
Okay, so if we're over on revenue overall, I mean, it, it just translates into less taxation for the following year, if I've got it clear in my head. Although we generally, you know, I mean, got to remember that this is just one cost center, one revenue expense center. There, we've got probably more than 30 of these revenue expense centers that, you know, we may be, we may be a little bit under, in, under, how shall I say? We, we may over expend our revenue in this cost center and under expend our revenue in another one. So it all balances out when we see finals, when we see the final year-end figures at some point. Counselor?
Well, I think the revenue and expenses here, Treasurer's working on, on a sound, manageable plan here, going on five-year averages, and she's looking back over what her revenue did, what her increase did. These are the figures she, she's come up with. And we can all see it was a dramatic increase in, in revenue last year. Last year's been an exceptional year in a lot of cases. I think we got, got a look at what her revenue was the year before. That was an average year. She upped it $10,000 over that. I think until we get a final budget here, we need to, need to let this sit where, where it is. I think she did her work. I think we need to abide by that and follow, follow through with it. I don't think $10,000 one way or another on this, it's still an expense. It's not going to make money. It's not like we're taxing for money and we're not going to spend it to, on what's, what's being used for. Still going to go and pay, pay against garbage, so I think we leave it where it is and go down the line. If it is a little over, it's just going to be less. Someplace else we, the revenue, as you said, and the revenue might not be on another place for an estimate, so.
Okay, so I got to, I got to move on. And the way I'm going to move on is I'm going to ask the question. I'm just going to ask people to just give me a show of hands and I'll, I'll determine where the consensus lies. And, and I'm going to, I'm going to insert a number and I'm going to call the question this way. Raise your hand if you're in favor of adjusting that budget estimate for bag sales. Raise your hand if you think that you're in favor of adjusting that estimate upward. Raise your hand. One, two. I'm with those. Three. And four, five. And if you're, if you're in favor of leaving it as it is, raise your hand. So I've got one, two, so five to two. All right, now, raise your hand if you're in favor of raising it upward by $10,000. Let me see the hands for 10,000. One, two. I'm three, four, five. Okay, so, and those opposed, I got two. So just make sure that the, the next one that comes through shows that number at 295 and I, that revenue number at 295, and I'm going to move on. And I'm moving on then to the next item on the agenda, which we've decided will be five, or sorry, yes, five. That was 5D. Yeah, these are the easy ones. So now I'm moving to 5E, which is the next one in our package, which is the 2021 Waste Disposal and Transfer Site Budget. And I've got that on page 52, 53 is the signature page, 54, 55, and 56. So let me just have a look here. First of all, going quickly through the, through the briefing note, committee reviewed the, CPI increases included, 15% increase in insurance premium has been included, projects a small increase of 4% due to increase in monitoring costs and insurance. No transfers in. No transfers into the reserve included in the draft budget. And the pre-audit balance of, uh, that reserve is going to be ninety-one thousand. Typically, no transfer into the reserve is budgeted annually. The purpose of the reserve, as per reserve policy, is to pay for site closure costs as well as set up a transfer station. Budget estimate of fifty thousand is included in the draft capital for design and site work for relocating the transfer station. And that's, uh, outlined in appendix one, which is, I think, on page, uh, yes, it's on page fifty-five. So let's look at the numbers first of the operation, and then we'll deal with the capital later. And so I'm on page fifty-four, and I'm looking at the revenue side. And just, I'll just ask the first question here. On the revenue side, we show some revenue from recycling. What is the source of that recycling revenue, if you don't mind me asking? Uh, through the CIO, through the treasurer, what is the source of that recycling revenue?
Uh, typically, typically recycling revenue is scrap revenue at the boneyard.
Oh, it is, okay. Thank you very much. And so, uh, everybody can see how, where those numbers came from. Now, uh, are there any questions with, uh, expense side?
A couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, through the chair to the treasurer. On the insurance, and I, and I see this throughout the budget, uh, where we're estimating fifteen percent due to a hard, uh, hard year. We also said that in two thousand and nineteen as well, so did we have a fifteen percent increase in the twenty twenty budget? And now we're going to have another one in the twenty twenty-one budget. Am I, am I under that assumption?
Uh, through the chair, we actually did have a fifteen percent increase in the budget, um, or projected. But when we actually got to the, um, to the renewal, council made the decision to increase the deductible, uh, which lowered the actual premium. And, and when we finally got to final budget, we adjusted those numbers to reflect that.
So, thank you very much for reminding us of that. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Melanie, for that. Uh, so we are, uh, is, is, is the fifteen percent increase again this year, is that, is that pretty realistic?
If I could jump in here to help, uh, with this. We're, we're seeing that United Counties and the reports from the other mayors are all anticipating, and they're building into their budget estimates for twenty twenty-one. Some are building in increases as high as thirty and thirty-five percent. So I think the treasurer has given us a very reasonable, uh, uh, estimate of a fifteen percent increase. I'm not so sure whether it'll materialize or not, but certainly it's a, it's a reasonable compared to what I've seen all around the area. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, and I'm going down that line, I think, under expenses line item, uh, four twenty-eight, which is the machine rental. We, we budgeted, uh, in twenty twenty, fifty-five hundred. We did not use any. So there was a zero. We're back up this year to fifty-five hundred. Is that, is you, was there a reason why we didn't rent this machine in twenty twenty?
Through the chair, I can answer that question, actually. So, um, machine rental township is really the allocation of public works equipment used at the landfill. That particular, um, calculation has not been made. It's usually done, um, at the very end after all of the hours are calculated specific from public works. So whatever hours the public works, works specifically at the landfill, then there's a calculation related to the machine hours used. Uh, that just hasn't been, um, completed as a journal entry. So, um, and I may, I might, I might try to remind council that, uh, if you're looking at the twenty twenty uh, actuals, there's potentially still some numbers that are not in there in all departments. And, uh, so I mean, if you're looking at trying to make twenty-one's budget match your twenty twenty actual, um, it's, it, it's not really the road to go, because there's too many factors that change from year to year.
Well, and I'm guilty of that, and now then I'll, 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 I'll fess it up, because I do look at these actuals, and, uh, and by the way, uh, I, I'm, uh, quite prepared to accept explanations like you've got, because if you're estimating, for example, that you'll use twenty, fifty-five hundred of public works machine time and charge it back against this budget, I can see where you wouldn't be doing that on a monthly basis. You would do that kind of at the end of the year on a once-a-year basis. So I can understand, uh, your explanation as to why that, that, uh, number appears, well, while, while that space appears blank at this point. So does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and that's all I have right now.
So I'm going to jump in with one, and that is line fifty-three twenty-seven, which is engineering disposal sites. And so we have fifty-three thousand, uh, on that line item. We used forty-three of it, and we're budgeting, uh, fifty-three again next year. Is that, in fact, the engineering that we paying at the Piston Road Site? Because in my, uh, I don't recall we did any S, engineering, uh, the Scott Road Site, so to the CIO, please.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. So that is our, um, monitoring and sample, sampling that JP two G does, uh, at, at both Piston and, and Scott Road Sites. And that also includes the, uh, an annual report that's required to be submitted to the ministry for the Scott Road Site. And I believe it's every two years for the Piston, uh, Road Site. And I believe that in twenty twenty-one, the Piston Road Site is, is due, and it's, it's about that eight or nine thousand dollars.
Right. Uh, and I, I want to thank you for reminding me that we have ongoing responsibilities there from, uh, the ministry and it's JP P that does the ongoing monitoring and, and prepares those, uh, year-end, well, annual or bi-annual reports. So, and, and looks like, uh, I mean, fairly accurate, uh, budgeting, because fifty-three thousand budgeted, forty-three thousand spent, I mean, pretty close. Yeah. So, um, now I want to go down then to waste disposal capital expense of fifty thousand. Uh, real, relocating the transfer site, finalize the design and site work. And, uh, I just want to raise the issue, because, um, I know that, uh, Councillor Hunter has spoken in favor of, of doing this work, but uh, in a year like this, I'm just wondering if, if that's a necessary undertaking for this year. And the reason I say that is because, to the best of my knowledge, uh, the transfer site that we've got is working. Uh, I haven't seen any adverse reports come through from Ministry of the Environment, and staff has not given us any signals that, uh, MOE is, is, um, expressing any concern. And, uh, what worries me, if you do, if you do these designs, uh, too far ahead of when you do the work, you, you end up doing them twice. So, uh, I'd like to hear some discussion. I'll give Councillor Hunter a chance to rebut me on that one.
Well, I'll bet you quick enough on, on it. We've got ninety-one thousand that we've already put into, in reserves. Except for this, we're not taxing for it. We're just using money that's already been taxed to put in for it, and we need to start this. So, it's sticking your head in the sand if you think you're not going to have to change that, that site. We're just lucky that when we had that fire there, that it didn't get out of hand. We'd give our, our chief and his crew a lot of credit there, that they had a, a fire department that got there quick with foam. Had started in the night. And that got burnt down in, got into that underground, ground burning there. I wouldn't even want to think what it would have cost us to clean up there, what hazards we could have got in there, so. Even older than the fire there, the ministry. I think we were awful lucky at the time, at the time, that we didn't get in trouble there, and you want to keep pushing the envelope until something happens that costs you a ton of money, and you're given X number of days to relocate another site, or do you want to be proactive and start going ahead? We had a layup done, we own the land, but it's on, on. It's a matter of getting the brush cut and getting it cleaned up, and, and the next budget year, starting to put some more money in and work the way out for two or three years and get it done.
Councillor Hunter's always a tough debater. Um, uh, so can I, can I go back to, uh, one of the major points? Is the ninety-one thousand that councillor referred to, do we have ninety-one thousand in that reserve account? I, I just can't recall the briefing note that well.
Yeah, Mr. Yeah, Mr. Chair, so as, the pre-audit balance as of, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty is ninety-one thousand in that.
Okay, and that, that's in the briefing note someplace?
Yeah, yes, it is. The fifth paragraph.
Okay, so then I'm gonna, I'm gonna push a little bit harder here. What, what, would council consider, uh, adding another twenty-five thousand to that reserve account? And, and so, and thus reducing the, uh, well, first of all, wasn't the intention that this fifty thousand would come from that ninety-one thousand reserve account? Was that the intention? Or were we going to tax for that fifty thousand?
Mr. Chair, in, 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 in this draft budget, it, it is to, to tax for it, but the briefing note, note sort of indicated that it could be taken from reserve to cover that expense.
Okay, so. So as presently constituted, the budget anticipates taxing for that fifty thousand.
That, that is correct.
Okay, so then I'll pose my question, uh, and, and go back into debate with Councillor Hunter. Would you consider, uh, taxing for twenty-five thousand this year and adding it to that reserve account and saving, uh, twenty-five thousand of taxation? Uh, and I'll open it up for other debaters.
We take the fifty thousand and go ahead and do it. We're saving fifty thousand of taxation. We're not taxing anything for it.
Sorry?
We go ahead and do it, take the fifty thousand out of the reserve right now and do it. We don't have to tax anything.
No, but, but the, but the issue comes down to, after the engineering is done, we still have to build the site. And my, my understanding was that we would use that ninety-one thousand to actually build the site.
Fifty thousand is going to be, your engineering is not going to be fifty thousand. I was debating fifty thousand plus doing brush clearing and some crap work on it.
Okay, floor's open for debate. Don't let me, just me and my, and Councillor Hunter. I'm losing there.
All, altogether, but, uh, but I, but I would, uh, I would like to see the, uh, the reserve, uh, pay for it and not taxation. So, uh, and the reason I wanted it was for taxing, to get rid of the taxation.
Who do you see, Mr. Grant?
Uh, Mr. Bradley, I believe, uh, wanted to make a comment.
Okay, so Mr. Bradley, then the deputy mayor.
Yeah, do, do we know what the estimated cost of actually preparing the site is?
Have we had any estimates, Mr. CIO, of what prep set, what is the cost to prep, prepare the site?
Uh, if I may, the, the, uh, the esti, the estimated cost to complete to the, the, the entire transfer site was around two hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, I think I saw that number somewhere. I see it. It's in the briefing note at the end.
Yeah.
It's under appendix A, the, the last.
Yeah, yeah, I see it. I'm sorry. Okay, so I guess, uh, given that it's going to cost us a quarter of a million bucks roughly to build this site and put it into operation, I would prefer to leave the ninety-one thousand in the reserve fund where it is, and if we, if we can, add for, add to it, you know, so that we get closer to a quarter of a million dollars, because that's, um, probably going to be, even on the low side possibly, when we actually execute the, the deal. So that's a, a response to that aspect. I have another question though, and this is a a hypothetical or a theoretical. Some years ago, I was involved with the development of, of a transfer site in a different prob, a different township. And a different county in, in the province. And we did much the same as this design, uh, is calling for. Uh, in addition to what's on this design, we had one of the waste, uh, in the waste bin area, we had a a locked and closed container, which, uh, people could bring hazardous waste to. The container was manned, uh, one day a month. And it was announced people could bring that hazardous waste and deposit it at that container. And the attendant, uh, and I don't know, I didn't go back afterwards, how they disposed of it, but the attendant that was there that day made arrangements to have that waste, that hazardous waste, um, picked up and disposed of. Um, because the next month we went back, it was, it was virtually empty and had been gotten rid of. So whether it was a day later or the same day or not, I'm not sure of. Have we given any thought? Like, we have one hazardous waste day that's announced, and we have to take the, the waste up to Spencerville. I just wonder if there's been any thought given to something like that for this particular transfer site.
Well, if I, I can just speak to that briefly, because it's United Counties that arranges our hazardous waste days. And we do that on a county-wide basis. And the reason that we do that on a county-wide basis is because of the savings. If we were trying to arrange our own hazardous waste days on even a once-a-month basis or twice-a-year basis, the actual cost of having them in to collect our waste and dispose it is really quite high. And the only way that we manage to mitigate those costs to our taxpayers is by having only one per year and having it done on a county-wide basis. It's the disposal of the stuff that costs the money. So, I mean, I don't think we've given any thought to that, but we're getting off the topic really of the, of the budget. Because we're getting into a discussion of the design of the waste site, and I think.
Well, well, you brought it up, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but you brought up the aspect of the design, so. Because we're talking about the fifty thousand.
I'm only, well, I'm only talking about the money. Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I have a hard time of, of putting this fifty thousand into this, uh, waste capital expense this year too. Do, are we having any problems, Dave, with that site the way it is right now? I know we had those tires. That was kind of a misfortune.
Through, through, through the, through the chair, there, there, there's no doubt that the, uh, that it's a very confined area. What we're also having, uh, some, some difficulty with is that the, the tires, we, we basically, we, we basically have to have a full load of, of, of tires on, on, on site before that they'll come and pick them up. Which before, we, we, we were able to, um, we, we were able to get a, like, a partial load picked up. So that, so now we're storing a, a, a lot more material on site in, in, in a confined area where, 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 where we're burning brush. So there, there most certainly is a higher risk. I, I would certainly say that we, we should, if nothing else, because this is a twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen uh, cost estimates in, in, in rough design, we, we really should, uh, look at, at, at getting, getting a design and at least getting started on it, whether that's fifty thousand or whether that's twenty-five thousand or, or some combination, because it will be a multi-year project. And I think by us taking those steps, should, and we, we certainly hope that there's not another event at that site, but should there be another event at that site, I think it's showing good, uh, due diligence uh, with respect to the ministry, that we're, we're, we're realizing that. Think it's showing good due diligence with respect to the ministry, that we're, we're, we're realizing that. We're starting to outgrow that, that site and we're, we're moving towards a site that will be better for the future.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
Did you learn?
What they both said. Okay, so, so my question is this. Do we have estimates on what it would cost just, I mean, the fifty thousand. As we see from the briefing note, was to go a little bit further than design and actually clear the site. So my question is, what would we be looking at in terms of just design costs?
Mister Chair, I, I could, I, I could be incorrect, but I, I am, I am thinking about the twenty-five thousand for, 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 for the design and. Preparation of the ECA application to, to, to shift the, to shift the location. And I think we were looking at about twenty-five thousand for, for, for clearing and some, some, some. Starting, starting on the, on, on the base framework.
So fifty thousand.
Well, that, 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 that was the combination of the, of fifty thousand, like a kind of like a, I, I would say like a fifty, fifty.
So the issue that I'm gonna put on the table is, is half a loaf instead of a loaf. And I think you understand what I mean by half a loaf instead of a loaf. Either do just the design this year, or just the clearing this year, and. And, and just raise the twenty-five thousand from taxation, that's the issue that I'm gonna put on the table. I'd like to hear discussion on just the issue, do we go to half a loaf, just that issue? Put it on the table, looking for speakers, I know where Counselor Hunter is coming from, I get it again.
One other thing we want to consider here too, if we do spend. Want to do the design, which we estimated twenty-five thousand, or do you want to tax or take a, take a reserve for, for this and this year? Until we get out of this, I'd say take a reserve. As far as the clearing goes. Like, it's not heavy, real heavy clearing, what you're doing. Depending how many busy our road crew is, we have a high hole and, and loader and stuff, a lot of that clearing. We could budget over the year, year, we've got a week, we're not doing road work ourselves, but the guys who are in there, we can start doing some of that clearing yourself.
Well, there's a concept, there's a concept, and so. If we, if we run a task, our public works crew with doing that basic clearing work. Wouldn't you, couldn't, can we get consensus around just raising the twenty-five thousand for the engineering? Now, again, it comes back to the treasurer will at some point charge equipment rental against the, the site, I understand that. And, and maybe that will drive the thing over budget, but it still won't be the same as a contractor coming in. Shouldn't be anyway. So can I get some discussion around that point, that issue, Counselor?
Well, I, Mister Mayor, I concur with, with, with Counselor Hunter. And one of the reasons I'm looking, looking at it, as I, as I said before, was to, that's, that's what this committee is here for, is to keep the taxation as low as. As low as we possibly can and be sensible about it, so. I, I would like to spend the fifty thousand dollars, but take it out of the reserve. And then, and then you've got clearing done and you've got the, and you've got the.
I know, but you're ninety-one thousand dollars short, you're, you're not, you're, you're.
But it's a multi-year program.
But it's only a multi-year in, insofar as how we space it out, the problem is. When you actually put the site into operation, you're gonna have to do it all at once, you can't, you can't run two sites. And you can't have half a site. I mean, and it's gonna cost, you heard the CIO tell you, it's gonna cost you two hundred and fifty grand.
It is.
You know, once you get, once you get all the design done, and once you get all the clearing done, you're still looking at. At two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand to actually get the site opened up. That, you can't, you can't spread that out, that has to happen. At least, I don't, is it your concept, Mister CIO, that, that you would develop the actual site? Development would be spread over a number of years? That the concept?
So, Mister Chair, I, 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 I believe that both sites could be run on, on, on a temporary. You, you could have those locations set up where. You know, the ti- the, the tires that were received on, on, on the Saturday at our, at our current station are, are transferred over. To, to, to the other transfer site for, for, for storage in the, in, in the immediate, right? I, I think you could stage some of those items, or maybe, maybe, maybe the brush pile ends up going there. I think, I, I think there are certainly some logistical items that, that have to be worked out. But I think the key part is to, to, to let's get that, a design going, let's get updated cost estimates. You're, 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 you're right, back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, it was two twenty-six. Maybe there are, are, are new and different techniques that maybe. With, with that point, that maybe, maybe it's a little less, maybe it's a little more. But I think that we, we need to go to that phase and, and the. If we're committed to that location, we, we might as well start declaring whether that's. As time permits with our, with our own, with our own crew, and, and let's see how far we can go. I think, I think fifty thousand is, is, is a, a nice reasonable start.
Okay, any more discussion here?
Just, just a question to the CIO on that, are there any grants programs? On transfer stations or whatever? That we could latch on to? Well, certainly, through the, through the chair, we, we will certainly look at opportunities, but I think that. The fir- the first step in that is that it is to have an actual design and, and the engineering done. So that, you know, if and when those grants come available, they're there. Depending on what that final concept is. It, it may be a stretch, but maybe some of that modernization money, depending on what you're doing with it. It may, may be applicable, I don't, I don't know, like that's, I, I think it's, it's, it's probably a stretch, but. I, I think that we should proceed in some way, shape or form, whether that's through, through, through taxation or. Removing some from reserve to force to get a, a, a good solid picture for the plan ahead.
Counselor?
Mister Mayor, I'll go along with the twenty-five thousand for the design and take it out of taxation, I want to leave the ninety-one thousand in the reserve. That's fine.
I'm with you, anybody else?
Mister Mayor? Is there a plan, maybe the CIO could answer this question? Is there a plan to add any additional money this year to the, to the? Reserve fund?
No, 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 there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor?
Well, I think that we seem to get stuck on here is that this is gonna cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the township. Mentioned it sounds like a lot of money, we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, on fixing one piece of rope. But yes, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but depending where you put your budget. Restrict that down over years, it can be done, this can be done over probably a three-year project before you actually have. Have the whole money invested in it, so. Saying sixty and seventy thousand dollar roadwork. All the time we're out of the budget, so I don't see that a, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar for an environmentally safe. Thing and straight for the township, plus the fact, both provincial and federal governments are bringing green energy action. All the time, I think this is the program here, the grants come at all under the green, greening. It would fit in, we stand a good chance of getting grant money door, we've got to show that we're, we're doing something, can't go and say, we're sticking, we'd like to. Thanks for saying. CIO said the first thing we're gonna say, what kind of thing, what are you doing, what are you doing with it?
That's why if we started with an engineer report, we'd know where we're at in an estimate. And not the estimate from, from two nineteen to, to two twenty-one. So, I'm in favor of going ahead with the.
Keep the site work till.
Put the site work and, and let our men work away when they get time, if they ever have any time, you know, they work up there.
Okay, so, that's funny. Okay, Mister Robertson, you haven't jumped in here yet.
I'm trying to get in. My suggestion would be to clear the land first. And see how that goes this summer and what the cost is going to be, and then if provided there's money left. Move on to the next, the engineering part of it, or the design part of it, and, you know, do it a bit, at a bit at a time. To me, the most important thing is to clear the land first of all.
Okay, so now the question is.
I'm the opposite of that, if I can, through the chair, I'm, I think I'm the opposite of that one, I mean, if, if it takes getting somewhere, it's. But I think engineering first, clear the land second, start to build third, so. For me, anyway, that, that seems to make more sense, so. For, for speed, I'd prefer to do both, but, but if it, if it takes just getting. Those engineering work done to get, to get moving on this and get it, get it going along, then I'm fine with that too.
Before we go on with this discussion, I just want to go back to the CIO for one minute, so we had a fire. In the brush pile, is that my understanding?
So, we, we, we had a situation where the brush pile. Reignited and it, it, it actually spread to the, to, to the tires.
Okay, which means that they were in some proximity to each other.
That, that, that is, that is correct.
Has that been corrected?
To, 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 to the degree that we can correct on, 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 on the limited platform that we have.
Okay, so it has been mitigated to some extent.
Correct.
Mister Mayor, can I go one more step, can we take the land that we own now? Even before we do our engineer report and get those tires moved over there? For storage?
Through, through, through the chair, we, we would require to have our ECA amended to, to, to allow for. For, for that storage on, on a diff- on a different location, because we, we. Receive the ECA based on the design of that, the, the current transfer station with, with those implications. So, a- as I said, I think the, the fir- the first step is the, is, is the engineering, the design concept, the, the approvals. End of it, get that in place and get a, a, a good handle on, on what those costs will be. And then, ma- maybe, maybe it's a full capital project in one year, maybe it's a capital project over, over two to three years. Where it's, where it's staged and you move some of the, some of, some of the products to, to the eventual new site.
Okay, so, we've had a good, good some discussion, I'm going to ca- I'm gonna close the discussion on this. By means of three questions, I'm gonna call the questions, I'm looking for shows of hands, I'm looking for consensus. I'm gonna call the questions in order, and the questions are gonna go like this. The first question is going to be. Do we raise through taxation twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand? That's gonna be the first question, the second question is going to be. Do, do, do the amount raised. To engineering or engineering and clearing, or, and or clearing, that's gonna be the second question. And then I'll determine the third question when I see where we are from there. So, I'm gonna ask the first question, I need a show of hand, I'm gonna ask it in such a way that you can vote yes or no. So the first question is. Uh, no, you won't be able to do vote yes or no, I'll have to ask it the other way. Are those in favor of raising twenty-five thousand from taxation, raise your hands, one. Two. Vote three, those in favor of raising the full fifty thousand in taxation, raise your hands. Nobody, I got nobody. Holy, I'm like, I'll have to ask the other question then, those in favor of taking the fifty thousand entirely out of the reserve account, raise your hands. Oh my goodness, I, I, opposed, those opposed, one, two, three. Four, your hand up, Mister Ra- Mister Robertson?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so we're not taking the fifty thousand out of the reserve account, that was four to three. All right, now, I gotta go back, I don't, I don't have enough people that are. Raising the full fifty thousand from taxation, but I can go back through the series of questions again. It has been, and I apologize if I got that sequence wrong. So, the, the, the determination has been made that the fifty thousand will not be coming from the reserve account, that was four to three. Next question, back to the original two, those in favor of raising twenty-five thousand from taxation, raise your hands. One, two, three, those in favor of raising fifty thousand in taxation, raise your hands. Nobody. So, I got a bunch of people that don't want to raise money and they don't want to take money from reserve accounts. So where am I?
Mister Mayor, I think I had my hand up and you may not have got me on the first count there.
Okay, so, were, were you in favor of raising twenty-five or fifty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, the twenty-fives again, put their hands up, well, that's still just three of us. Oh, four, now there's four to raise twenty-five thousand. All right, and, and so there's four to raise twenty-five thousand. So then if I ask for the fifty, I'm gonna get three hands, am I not? Raise your hands if you're up for fifty thousand, raising fifty, no, I'm not getting anybody, all right, so.
Can we see who wants in?
Go ahead.
If, if, if I may, Mister Chair, may, may, maybe try the combination to see if there'd be a willingness to. Raise twenty-five thousand from taxation and take twenty-five thousand from reserve.
Oh my God, there's more permutations and combinations than enough here. Okay. I'll ask the question, raise your hands if you're in favor of twenty-five thousand. To be raised from taxation and twenty-five thousand to be taken from reserves, one.
I, I could, I could be. I could sit on the fence on that one.
Yeah, well, you are sitting on the fence. But I've only got one for that option, so I'm back to twenty, raise twenty-five thousand. Spend that twenty-five thousand on engineering and put the clearing over to the public works department, is that? Would you take, I would take that as what I've heard here tonight. Am I, am I encapsulating it correctly?
I, I'm going to say that that seems to be that, that twenty-five thousand. For taxation to, to, to perform as much work as we can.
Right, but, yeah, from the public works department, right?
Well, engineer report, yeah. And, and, and engineering approvals and what, whatever site work we can get done with INAM's forces.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on then.
Am I correct in thinking, if I may, to Mister Chair, that, that this still has to be approved by council at a final budget?
Oh yeah, and all, all we're talking about is what goes into the next draft. That's all we're talking about at this point, what, what goes into the next draft of the budget, and I think we've just provided direction to that. All right, so now I'm on item number five F. Which is the draft agricultural budget, which is now page fifty-eight and fifty-nine of our package, we're getting towards the end of our package. But the meeting is just getting started.
We're gonna go backwards.
Okay, so. So we're talking about agricultural drainage. Review the cost, again, as per the current policy. And let me have a look, council recommends direct staff to include the agricultural drainage budget. And let's have a look at the drainage budget, nothing in the way of grants. Realized in twenty twenty, hopeful to raise five in grants from twenty, in twenty twenty-one. And so the staff is recommending an expenditure of forty-nine thousand. On agricultural drainage, now Mister CIO, would you tell us what the. Thrust of the, of the expenditures would be?
Thank you, I'm not sure if the treasurer wants to speak to this or if she would like me to speak to it.
I can, I can speak to it through the chair, so. Again, the municipal drainage line revenue as well as the drainage engineer consulting. Those two lines are tied together. So typically we put in a grant amount, fifty percent of the amount of money we've spent. Uh, the reason why the revenue line is not being recorded yet is that we don't have all of our numbers yet from the drainage engineer for twenty-twenty. Once we do get that, we submit, uh, an application for the drainage grant, uh, subsequent to that, and we get fifty percent of the total costs. So those, that five thousand is directly related to the ten thousand below. It's a fifty percent granting. Um, the only other impacts to this particular budget, uh, is, is the salary, which is, uh, one, one, a portion of, uh, of one person's salary that's in here just to, uh, to, to monitor the drainage, um, and do all that application and, uh, that reporting.
That the drainage superintendent?
I, I, I believe that's, uh, some, some of the director of operations', uh, salary.
Okay, and the question is, is there, is the consultant, is that the Robinson that we're talking about?
Uh, no, the consultant, uh, is, well, our drainage, our, is our drainage superintendent, and that's Kevin Holly from.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, okay. And is this, uh, most of this was centered on Johnstown, was it?
No, this, this, this is anything on, on, on any of the municipal drains.
Oh, municipal drains, okay.
Correct.
All right. Okay, so are there any questions here? Because I see there is a recommendation, uh, just to include those estimates in the next draft.
Yep.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes, just, just a question. Uh, we only spent, uh, less than two thousand dollars on Bieber and Noel. Is that because we sort of have the Biebers under control? If you could, you can say a thing like that.
They have a coma.
Like, we need five thousand in there.
So it, through, 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 through the chair, uh, it, it, it does vary a, a little bit. Uh, but, uh, typically, uh, we, 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 we are expending, uh, closer to that five thousand in, in most years.
Okay, and I guess my next question, and I think it's the last one I have, is regarding line item, uh, fifty-three oh seven miscellaneous. We spent, we've got, uh, two thousand, uh, in, in the budget. We spent two eighty-seven and in nineteen, we didn't spend any. So do we need, do we need two thousand in there? Would, would one thousand be, uh, be a little more closer to the, uh, to the mark?
What, what is that, uh, that's miscellaneous? What is that designed to cover?
Through, through.
Miscellaneous, I know.
Yeah, through, 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 through the chair, I, 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 I'm going to say that in, anything that may arise that is, is incidental, that, uh, is, isn't captured in, 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 in the other item. Uh, it, you know, and could, could it get dropped to a thousand? If, if committee, if committee would like to drop it to a thousand, it can be dropped to a thousand.
Okay, uh, I'm not hearing any pickup on the, on that. And I do have a recommendation in front of me.
I got one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, the, uh, fifty-three twenty-five, uh, ten grand and thirty-five hundred. Have we expected another bill from that, from the consultant coming in? The actual?
So, so.
I know what Mel said, everybody.
Yeah, so through, 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 yeah, we, typically, uh, I believe it's, uh, end, end, end of January or, or early February.
Yeah, thank you.
That the, the, the consultant, uh, provides all the invoices in, in the application to O M A F R A for the, uh, fifty percent funding.
All right, uh, I'm looking for consensus around the recommendation. Can I get a nodding of heads, please? All right, so go ahead.
That's it.
All right, so now.
Challenge to Mary.
I don't think so.
All right, now we're at item five A.
Now, now the conference.
Uh, which is the draft public works budget. And on the draft public works budget, it's going to be multi-page effort. And, um, so I asked the, uh, the C I O to just put in on your tables, the vehicle list there, so asking a whole bunch of questions because I can't remember which are which of these vehicles, but there's something I can refer to here in front of me.
They're nice and big, too.
Yeah, it's a good size, okay. All right, now, so the first, uh, the first page I want to look at is page eight of fifty-nine. And that's the revenue estimates. And, uh, again, um, just looking at the revenue estimates. And, uh, the revenue estimates for last year were twenty-nine and for this year, they're forty-one thousand. Uh, I mean, excuse me, the actuals realized were forty-one. And, uh, next year's draft budget, twenty-one draft budget is estimates of roughly thirty-five thousand. Uh, now, are there any questions with those estimates? Other than that, I'm going to move on to the capital revenues. There's an anticipated, uh, Ontario grant of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, say three-hundred thousand, which is the, uh, O C I F, the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. Uh, project is a whip forward from twenty-twenty-one for the Brent Ventnor Bridge and partial work on Latimer Road of a hundred and seven thousand. So that would come forward. And then in twenty-twenty-one, we're anticipating formula-based funding in interest of a hundred and ninety-two. Now, that was the Ontario, uh, Community Infrastructure Fund. Is, is that the hundred and ninety-nine thousand that was just announced to, to the C O and the treasurer?
One ninety-one.
One ninety-one? To the C O and the treasurer?
Treasurer, uh, uh, Melanie?
Sorry, I'm just trying to catch up here. Um, so the twenty-twenty-one formula-based funding was recently announced. That's, um, and plus some interest that's, that's in the account from last year, uh, puts us at the one ninety-two, one ninety-one.
Okay.
One ninety-two, one ninety-five.
Right, okay, so that, okay, so that's where the two ninety-nine comes from, right?
It's a combination of, uh, some money that was unspent in, um, of O S I F money from twenty, uh, unspent for the whipped projects in twenty-one between Latimer and Ventnor Bridge and, uh, and then the, the new money for twenty-one.
Okay, now, uh, and transfer estimating gas tax of a hundred, of two-thirty? Now, I'm just wondering, has there been any discussion at the treasurer's level? Are we still anticipating that the, uh, transfer from the gas tax funds will be as robust in twenty-twenty-one as they were in twenty-twenty? And the reason I'm asking is what we know that the gas tax funds are exactly that. They're funds that come from the, either the federal or the provincial, uh, tax on gasoline. And, uh, we all know that gasoline sales across the province are down drastically. So are the treasurers still anticipating that we'll be that close in twenty-one as we were twenty?
Uh, the twenty-one funding is allocated to us, so it's not fluctuated. They, they, uh, they actually give us that information in advance. Um, the, the fluctuating, um, is something whether it would affect, uh, future funding, not necessarily the, the current allotment.
Okay, I see, fair enough. And a hundred thousand, uh, whip forward from twenty-twenty, engineering for various roads, Cedar Grove Road. So there's where our revenue would come from. And so now I'm going to go to page nine. And on page nine, you've got the operating expenses. Now, I think what I'm going to do is just ask, are there questions on page nine?
Uh, yeah, I, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, it's line fifty-one oh two, the salaries. The actual salaries in twenty-twenty were two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. The, the budget is two eighteen. Is the difference due to overtime or something or?
In other words, it's, you're questioning why it's less?
Yeah.
Um, yep, through, through the chair. Um, when we budget for, um, salaries, uh, there's, um, there's a certain amount goes in for either stats or vacation. And, uh, any of those that are not functional, uh, wages, like they're not doing brushing and they're not doing other specific functions, as you see later on, there's a labor line specific to a function. You'll see that some of those lines are lower and it's just a reallocation of where that got costed. Um, so i- it's not an exact science. Uh, the, if you told all of the bu- all of the budget lined and the actuals, you probably wouldn't see much of a difference.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, and going, I'm going down the list here. My next question comes with two overhead doors at twelve thousand each. Uh, where are they planned for? Anything?
I'd like to refer to the, uh, director of operations or the C I O to that because I don't know the specifics.
To the C I O, please. So, uh, those overhead doors, the mind retraining. Okay, and so then to the treasurer, would, I know there's two doors, that'd be six grand each, so the, the, they don't make capital, oh, eh?
Um, a lot of times when it's something where we, with our, with our buildings, we don't have our buildings, uh, come, uh, broken out in components to that extent. Um, we might put something, uh, because these would potentially or could get damaged so that we're not watching asset life on this. Um, there's, there's two, two reasons why we would capitalize. Whether there's a, a lifespan that's beyond a certain length that's reasonable to track. Um, so, I mean, it's a, it's one way or the other, but it's one of those things, whether you want to capitalize it and then, uh, mo- monitor the depreciation and the lifespan or you, or you just say it's a repair to the building.
I got you. Okay, and the accountant will accept it either way?
Um, well, our auditor, um, not our accountant, um, our auditor, our auditor will only look at something that's overly material in nature. They wouldn't necessarily, uh, look to the depths of, of, uh, like, le- looking into G L details of, of a specific repair line.
Okay, all right, so any other questions with page nine?
Counselor Hunter.
I just have one question on the doors. So, so through, through the chair, it would be done through quotes, based on the procurement?
Okay, no further discussion there? Okay, now, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to move down to line fifty-three twenty-four. It's, uh, only twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, but the note indicates it includes a replacement of two computers. Can you get two computers for twenty-five hundred bucks?
Yeah, certainly through the chair, um, through our I T provider. All we're doing is replacing the hard drive, not a complete set of computers. So it's, it's really not like getting keyboards and, and screens and everything, it's just a hard drive.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Cameron. Yes, uh, on page nine, I, I, I just like clarification on, uh, under vehicle expenses, which is line item, uh, fifty-six thirteen, equipment labor. I, can I just give a definition of what equipment labor will be?
Through, through, through the chair and, uh, oh, certainly I know the road super is, is, is on there, so he can correct me if I, if I stray correctly. But, uh, this line item is, is, uh, for in-house, um, tracking of, of, of times spent on, 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 on maintenance on, on fifteen-inch vehicle.
So it's labor that we, you, that our, our own people do.
Correct.
I was just, I was curious about that.
Okay. Yeah, do we change our own oils?
Well, I, 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 I'm not necessarily sure that we, we, we change our own oils. The road super, the road super can, uh, quantify that, but, you know, I think, I, I think they're, you know, you know, wa- wiper blades and in, in, any time spent on, uh, on, uh, on, on main game, the truck that can be done in, in, in-house. We, uh, it, it's just better tracked that way. But, uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to the road super, maybe you may want to, uh, further explain that.
Thank you, Mr. C I O and through the chair. I absolutely, the, what we try to do is, is, um, keep all the minor repairs in-house. And our staff takes care of each, each unit as required. The, um, the, the, uh, oil changes, uh, on the trucks are done through our P M program. Uh, however, we do do oil changes on some of our larger equipment, uh, similar to, uh, or like the grader and such. Um, and, and do that in-house as well.
Counselor Cameron.
Yeah, so just, just, just for a little more clarification. So we do that using our own people in-house, who we're already paying a salary to, which is, which we raised from taxation. Now we're, now we're raising another fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars from taxation where they've already been paid.
So through, through, through the chair, just, just to clarify, that, that, that is the, the, the wages broken in, broken out. So they, they spent, uh, X amount of hours, which equivalent to, to fifteen thousand on, on, on that particular item.
As opposed to snowplow?
As opposed to snowplowing, which is, which is, you know, there's labor on that part, there's labor on roadside maintenance, there's, right? So just breaks out where, where they're spending their time.
Right, right. Time allocation.
Correct.
Okay, and so if there are no more questions with page nine, now I'm going to go down, I'm starting on page ten. So I'm on page ten here and, uh, I'm going out for questions on page ten. I have a whole bunch, but anyway, let somebody else go first there. Okay, nobody's going. I'm going to ask a number of questions on thirty, on, on fifty-six forty-eight, which is T four. And I'm just going to take a quick glance and see what T four is. It is a
International Building.
And the plow. Yeah, but I don't know what year it is.
If I, if I, if, if.
Two nineteen. Twenty nineteen, Mr. Ch- Mr. Seal?
Uh, sorry, just, uh, allow, allow me to check. So, uh, I, I believe, uh, T four, the, the one you're referring to on your, on, on your larger sheet would be T four A, which is the Peterbilt tandem plow, which is the two thousand and one.
Correct. Yeah, so why have we got two T fours, for goodness sakes?
Well, we have, we, we have a T nineteen oh four, which is, which, which is the year and, 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 and the truck number. So we're mov- mov- moving forward as, uh, as vehicles are replaced, it, they'll, they'll be identified by the, the, the year with the dash on, on, on their truck number.
All right, so thirty-six forty-eight. I've got five thousand budgeted for repairs and maintenance, eleven thousand spent and five thousand budgeted again. And depending on which line I look at, the maintenance costs in, in twenty-twenty, that's the eleven sixteen. So why would? And in what year is this thing, two nineteen?
Two oh one.
It's two, it's two thousand and one, uh, Mr. Chair, and it was, uh, it was, uh, utilized as a, as a spare. Uh, but now that we have a couple of additional trucks, we're, we're not anticipating, uh, the use of that vehicle to, to the same frequency as we're, uh, anticipating that, uh, with, with the newer vehicles, uh, they'll be in, in service at a much, uh, higher percentage of time.
Okay, and then when I look at T five, which is fifty-six fifty-eight, T five, what is T five?
T five is the, uh, two thousand and, uh, nine, um, International Tandem.
All right, so thirty thousand repairs and maintenance and budgeted for twenty-twenty, spent twenty-nine. And it looks like we're going to spend another thirty this year. And it's a, what year is it, or nineteen?
It's a two thou- it's a two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine? You're getting that from the call that says you're in service?
Correct.
Eleven years old. Gosh, inexpensive. Eleven years old, gosh, inexpensive thing.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I I I believe that that unit would be the next one due for for replacement. And I I expect that you would see that coming in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, go ahead.
That we're on T five, correct?
Yes.
So I'm looking at last year's budget for for T five under repairs and maintenance, the budget item for it was twenty thousand five hundred, and the actual is thirty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-three twenty-seven.
So in twenty nineteen, we spent thirty-eight three twenty-seven. And in twenty twenty, we spent another twenty-nine. That's a lot of money on repairs and maintenance for that vehicle.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just just to put you a little bit of context, that particular unit, it was just the cabin chassis that was purchased and the 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 plow equipments and the dump box, et cetera, were used and transferred over. And so that's probably somewhat contributing to the the higher maintenance.
Is there a lesson there for us?
I I I believe that there is a lesson there, that if if we're going to replace a a truck for the most part, especially a tandem axle, that it's it's purchased new, complete with the plow equipment.
Don't try to go cheap on the equipment.
Well, I I I think it's I think that has come back to 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 fight our township on this particular vehicle.
Okay, I'm moving down the list here, I'm getting the same thing with T six, fifteen thousand budgeted, twenty-nine thousand spent, another fifteen thousand budgeted. And T six, it turns out is a Volvo. Looks like it's a twenty fourteen budget, twenty fourteen Volvo.
It's an international tandem.
What are these V O numbers in front of these items? What are these all about?
I will I I will defer to the road superintendent. I I can't recall what the oh, sorry, so that's vehicle number six and fourteen stands for the year. So the V is vehicle, oh six is the is the truck number, and fourteen is the year. Year in service.
It's just a method of how we keep our data for these different trucks, and it's easier to do it with the year and everything in there.
And it keeps us guessing as to what the year is.
That would be over in column, the second last column is the year in service.
Well, I know, but the year in service, you know, when I like to know what was the date because the big difference between putting a vehicle in service in January and put it in service in December. But anyway, here's this one, it's also seems to be very heavy on the maintenance. And then when I go down to T seven, and what is T seven? For goodness sakes, another, it looks like it's a
If if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Vehicle.
If 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 we may, Mr. Chair, can we can we give some explanation with with respect to truck six and and truck seven?
Go ahead.
If you recall, truck seven was where we had to replace the the engine. And that was it was decided to replace the engine versus and that I believe that cost, I'll defer to the road super for or the Director of Operations or for that. Something runs in my mind around thirty to thirty-five thousand.
Yes, yeah.
So, you know, removal of that, I I would say that it would have been on on budget. Truck six, that was something to do with the oil or something leak, oil leakage.
It was an upper engine job as well. So the 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 it wasn't a complete engine, it was a similar problem with seven as in as in six. And but six was caught and partially paid by warranty. And hence all the other trucks had to, when these trucks were at a service over the summer, had to take up the share of the work that would normally go to these other trucks.
Was that for that? Twenty nineteen, T six was seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one, which was five thousand. T seven was ten thousand six hundred and ninety.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
In the column marked mileage, is that in miles or kilometer kilometers?
Through through the chair, that is in kilometers.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're on T eleven has been traded. Then T eleven, thirty-six ninety-eight. Well, that's another line where it's straight line. Why are those two lines separated like that? They're both the same truck.
So I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what what line are you at?
Well, I'm trying to, when I go to all the others, the the licenses are on one line, repairs and maintenance are on the next line. Now I'm at T eleven, the license is on one line, I gotta skip down three to see repairs and maintenance.
I think that's I'm going to anticipate that is just the glitch in the system, they should be below each other.
Can I can I answer that question, actually? So the system has a preset accounting line numbers, and in order for me to be able to keep the new truck, T twenty-eight license and repairs together, I had to insert it between those two lines. Coming going forward in future budgets, you won't see T eleven or T eleven repairs and maintenance, those will go off off the off the
I got you.
Right, so I it was just in the system, there's there you're limited to this to to get sequencing, right? Count sequencing.
The trucks that are, what are what are anticipated costs here for the what I'm going to call the trucks that are still here, where do we get? I mean, if I look at twenty twenty, year to date, or better yet, when I look at twenty-one draft budget, I I have to go to page eleven to see the total, do I?
That is correct, Karen.
So on page eleven, I'm seeing not just repairs and maintenance, I'm seeing repairs and maintenance and licensing. And in one case, I'm seeing fuel. So, for example, on T one, I see repairs and maintenance, and I see license, and I see fuel. It seems to be the only one where the fuel costs are included.
That's I think because of gas, Mr. Mayor, and not diesel.
That is correct.
Okay, so then if I want to see what my truck repair costs are, I have to I have to remove, I have to go to the two twenty or ninety, and I have to remove then the brush off all of those numbers, and then I have to remove the the numbers on the next on page ten as well. So, and there's some lease payments in there as well. So I can't really see what my repairs and maintenance are on my truck. Is there any way of getting to what the repairs and maintenance are going to be on my truck compared with what I spent last year?
Well, I did, you know, I I'm going to say that for 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 total vehicle vehicle and equipment expenses, we're budgeting twenty twenty-one, two hundred and twenty thousand, which is the budget in twenty twenty, which was two sixty-four, and our twenty twenty actual was two sixty-five. Don't don't have it broken down by just just the vehicles separated from from equipment for 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 this budget purpose.
Okay, so let's keep going, I'm on page eleven. Go ahead.
Yes. Where where would I where do I find T four A on my budget? Where would I find that?
So you, as through the chair, as as I indicated previously, two forty, T four A, which is the two thousand and one. T four is line item thirty-two fifty-six forty-four and thirty-two fifty-six forty-eight.
Okay.
Okay, but
Go ahead.
Well, I I I'm still confused, because one one is a Peterbilt, and one is an international.
That 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 is correct, they're two different.
So why are we using the same number?
Okay.
So through through the chair, we we typically use that number system because it aligns with the routes. So we have our mapping, we have everything related to the truck number with routes. So as we said, to 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 clarify, moving moving forward, that it will be by the the identification will be the truck, the year, dash, and 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 the number. So truck four or truck four A, if we anticipate by in in twenty twenty-two, you you won't you won't see that on there.
Okay, so can we go back to the numbering system for a second?
Certainly.
So from the point of view of us guys that are looking here at costs, we couldn't care less when we're talking costs, what the root is. What we have to be able to distinguish in our heads is what vehicle are we talking about, and what year is that vehicle? So is there, are you saying that, for example, we'll always be having a T four, and we'll always be having a T six? Or are you saying that as we go forward, we'll see the year and a number?
So for 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 instance, with when T five gets replaced, let's say. Right?
Yep.
So T T T T five license and T five repairs and maintenance will go off on that line item, right, and it will be replaced with a T, let's say if it's in twenty twenty-two, it would be replaced as T twenty-two dash zero five.
Oh, I still have the five. Is the
Well, there we, well, through through the chair, I I I certainly I understand that, but there's a lot of things tied to 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 that numbering system that we would not want to eliminate that number entirely. And I think and 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 I think with a year and 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 number, it it identifies it adequately, but it's something that we can certainly look at at a later date.
I'll keep your five, but give me in. I do like the V zero six fourteen, you know, vehicle six, two thousand and fourteen, that's pretty sense, pardon?
That makes perfect sense.
What's the six stand for, the root?
No, the vehicle number six.
Vehicle number six is the next two numbers of the year.
And fourteen is two fourteen.
Okay, but then when vehicle six gets replaced, it's going to be vehicle nine. It's not going to be
That's right, vehicle nine twenty-one.
So we're not, so so when vehicle six gets replaced, it would be V zero six and whatever year it was placed in.
So you're going to keep the six?
Yes.
So it's going to be V six, oh, that's good then, V six twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-three, yes.
And we know it's a year.
Yes, the truck is always the root.
Yeah, so number six, I I've got a problem with that, and I like the twenty-two, like the the last two digits. I'd rather have that than get rid of the T fours and T fives, but I guess you can't, right?
We 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 will look to make some adjustments to in in an attempt to make in a little
Yeah. Um, I have one question, Mr. Mayor, before we move on to that, is it is it possible to take T four A off this year?
As it as it as it stands right now, I believe the preference would be to leave it in one more year, just for safety purposes, as a as a as a spare.
Are there any other questions with page ten? I'm moving on to page eleven. Any questions on page eleven? What's O S I M bridge inspection?
Through the through the chair, that is the the biannual inspections of the of the bridges as required. I I'm drawing a blank on the on on that acronym, maybe the road superintendent or director of operations might have that off the on on the tip of their tongue.
Done.
I can't remember what it is either, but it is to deal with bridges and and the requirements for us to check the the condition of the bridge and ensure that the load that it carries and is can be adhered to. So if we have, if we can't, then it has to be reduced in load in load capacity. So it's obviously something Ontario, but I can't remember.
Was there no expenditure in twenty twenty, or is it just that the bills aren't in yet?
At my knowledge, there was no expenditures because we didn't engage our consultant last year to do that. We held it off because of I hate to say it, but COVID. And left it for this coming year.
Are there any other questions with page eleven? You're done.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Materials on bridges and culverts. Twenty-five, we used thirty-four in twenty twenty, now we're back to twenty-five, right? How many bridges do we have in the township, roughly? And what's material, like, is that like?
If I if I may through the chair, the materials are related to the the granulars used for for entrance culverts. Those 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 items.
And could we get an answer to the first question, how many bridges do we have?
I I I believe the the bridges and culverts that that fall under that around fifteen, maybe?
I had fourteen, Dave, but could be fifteen.
So I I I will certainly defer to the road super and director on on the numbers.
Really, Chair, does that does that mean the culverts, the big ones, are not the little, those too huge ones, right?
Yeah, so so through the chair, so so for instance, Legion Way, the culvert, the culvert there.
Pinston Road.
Pinston Road.
And the one you did last year on Smith Roads.
Smith Road. Then then you have like the Venture Bridge.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, so 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 those larger, I I believe it's larger than three three meter or something like that.
Do we have a total of fourteen in the whole township?
I I I I I believe that that is the the number that falls under the O S I M requirement.
Bridges are a finite number. You have a finite number of bridges. Separated from culverts, we have X bridges.
That 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 would be correct, and I I do not have that number off the top of my head.
Does the treasurer? Mr. Seal, does the treasurer know?
I I I don't, I don't, I don't expect that anybody at the rate off the top of their head has that exact number on us, but I I can certainly provide that to 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 committee tomorrow. That wasn't anticipated to be a discussion question for the for for the budget. To 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 be quite honest, I I I I'm certainly not prepared to answer questions on on the number of
Moving on. I'm moving on. Are there any other questions with? Are there any other questions with page eleven?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's two lines, fifty-six oh-three, fifty-six oh-five, overhead shop. Labor's down for the twenty-twenty-one from twenty-twenty by five grand roughly. And, but fuel is up by thirty thousand, is there an explanation for that?
Five-year average, it says. A note in the market that that's the five-year average.
Yeah, but we only spent sixty-two in twenty-twenty.
Theoretically, you would think would drag the average down a bit.
Well, yeah, is this going to be a normal year?
Um, through, through the chair, twenty-twenty was not a normal year. We started off with a light winter season. You can see later on, uh, under winter control that we actually underspent in our winter control. Um, and a lot of that fuel would have been logged there. Um, again, typically, we look at a five-year average because we have harsher winters. If we're out more, we're actually going to need more fuel.
Yep, okay.
All right, and now, if there are no more questions with eleven, I'm moving to twelve. I've got, I'm going to ask the first couple of questions here with brushing. I've got labor, sixty-four thousand spent roughly in twenty-twenty and forty-five thousand budgeted for this year. I've got materials, and I've got machine rental external. So my question is, what is the length of road work that we're brushing? And, or what are the hours, what's the effort here? What is the plan on the expenditure of something like fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand dollars? What is the plan?
Um, Mr. Mayor, through, through, through you, the, um, the, we, we plan to approximately brush somewhere in the order of, of two to three kilometers a year. And we'd like to do more, and that's why we haven't brushed it in. If we do, we can double that number. Um, and that's, that's the, that, that puts our labor at the level that it's at. Um, and it's a, it's, it's, we calculated using man hour, man hours. The man hour calculation, uh, change, floats every year. And in this case, in, uh, under, under brushing, fifty-six, twenty-one is, uh, we've, we've reduced it. Uh, um, we, but because of our year being, uh, early, uh, early finish of winter and late start of winter, we were able to do more brushing in that area. The, the man hour calc is something that provides us the ability to, uh, move that around as far as what, what weather and, and, uh, tasks face us during the course of the year or may change during the course of the year, like, like this past year. So, uh, uh, we, we've, um, that, that's, that's as simple as I can, can make it without, you know, going into a lot more greater detail.
Okay, fair enough. And any other questions?
I, I, Ms., yeah, Mr. Mayor, just on that same subject, I have a question. Uh, like we budgeted twelve, forty-five, nine, seventy in labor. And at the same time, we have in our capital, the purchase of a, of a head for the high hopes. So if we get the head and we spend the capital and get the head, it permits us, if my understanding is correct, to be able to do a lot more. But if we approve this budget and we get that head, uh, spend the capital and get the head, are we going to make sure that we limit our activity in twenty-twenty-one to forty-five thousand, nine, seventy? In other words, there's a, that puts a constraint on it. And so if, are we going to live with that constraint? That's my question.
Mr. Mayor, uh, what, what we do, it, it all depends what Mother Nature, uh, puts in front of us. Like I explained earlier, we, we didn't have as much winter, we have a savings in winter last year. And, um, but it does show that we still have, everybody works two thousand eighty hours a year, uh, less their holidays, et cetera. We have to be able to move them around, uh, to different tasks. And in this case, brushing was one of them this year, um, there was others. Um, but, uh, hardtop maintenance was another one. So we, we try to do is keep that floating for the year so that we can react to the different needs within the operations budget. So as, as far as, as far as next year or this year goes, I have no idea. My, my crystal ball's only as good as, as everybody else is, like, I can't, I, I do my best to project where I think the work, uh, effort is going to be and, uh, using not only just our five-year plan, but also our plan, um, as, as, uh, we see the need for change and needs this year. So, uh, hope that answers.
Oh, so what is the variable that controls ditching? That's maybe the question.
Uh, what is the variable that, uh, sorry, I didn't get your question.
Well, the point that I'm making is that we're budgeting forty-five, nine, seventy, and it seems to me that that's a controllable activity, ditching. So when we reach the forty-nine, five, nine, seventy, are we going to say, okay, we've spent the twenty-twenty-one budget, there's no more ditching for this year? Or are we going to continue to ditch and overspend the forty-five, nine, seven?
So, and, and a quick response to that is if we over expend in brushing, we will have under expended in another area because that man hour, man hours goes to that, that task. So, uh, hopefully that, that helps.
What they're trying to do is give themselves flexibility to use the, if they need the snow plowing, it would obviously come first. So in the first half of the year, if their snow plowing labor has been lower than budget, they know that they can maybe spend a bit more time, labor hours, ditching or brushing. And that, and what they're, what he's saying is that they try to leave that floating. Our problem that we have is that when we, uh, when we, um, allocate a budget, we have a certain expectation that a certain amount of work is going to be done. Uh, whether it's sixteen hundred meters of ditching or fifteen hundred, a hundred fifty kilometers of roadside mowing, uh, we have a certain expectation that that minimum is going to be done. And we don't really have a mechanism to judge that. You know, it's very easy, uh, for the staff to go back and say, well, you know, we planned to do sixteen hundred meters of ditching this year, but we only did a thousand. Well, why? Well, there is a logical explanation, and that is because we spent more time plowing snow. That might be one explanation, I understand that. But on the other hand, you know, if you're budgeting to do sixteen hundred meters of ditching, that means that you must be planning to have at least that number of hours free in non-snow plowing months, if I can put it that way. So we would want to know, why wasn't that sixteen hundred meters of ditching done? How could they answer us?
And, and conversely, converse. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Bradley, the, and you're absolutely correct. Uh, that would afford a, a, an explanation, uh, if we didn't get there. And the, and the reason you used was because it snowed earlier and we were plowing snow earlier. Or it was dry over the summer, we didn't need to cut as many times, um, the grass. That, all that, all that is part of, part of the calculation. We anticipate and forecast the work, uh, to be what you see in your budget today. Um, it will vary depending on Mother Nature. And, and, and explanation of that will be afforded at, at the time. Uh, we have variances.
Okay, other discussion, other questions, Councilor, Councilor Dillba. Uh, yes, um, on page, we're on page twelve, right?
Yes.
Thirty-five dash fifty-six, sixteen. Uh, we went from eighty-three thousand of actual, I guess, or eighty-five to twenty-twenty budget, now we're up to a hundred sixty-seven of, uh, of patching, that's quite an increase. Uh, I see that a hundred thousand on page twenty-four, fifty-nine. Uh, hardtop patching, are your areas. Why, that's a big difference.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe that's a, uh, subject of, uh, of an appendix to this report. Um, and maybe easier to explain, uh, under that appendix.
Appendix on page twenty-four.
I believe so.
Yeah, I, I see it. But what I want to know is, how do we, how do we come up with a hundred thousand dollars of contract patch? I see, I seen the one that we did last year in Johnstown, and I think we should have just redid the whole screen. If that's what you call patching, of what we did up there last year.
Through the C L, please.
So, um, I mean, Mr. Chair, I mean that we're moving to, to look at appendix D so that we can actually walk through and have a, have a discussion?
Uh, well, that seems to be where Councilor, uh, Dumball is taking us. I just, you know, you see the twenty-one budget, a hundred sixty-seven five compared to eighty-five, yeah.
So, if, if, if I may, through the chair, so, so any, any of those, um, bigger items that there's, that have a big variance in, in expenses, that's why we have done an appendix, uh, to, to have a discussion, to see if, uh, if, if committee is, is committed to, to, to doing that increased, uh, uh, level of, level of patching or if they, uh, want to, uh, you know, uh, refer to the, to, to the amount of patching and, and, uh, work that that was, that, that was, that was done in, in, in twenty-twenty. But if you, if you recall, if I may, back in twenty-twenty, when, uh, we, we, we did the patching, there, there, there were a number of spots that, uh, that, that didn't get done because we, we only had a, a certain amount of money. So, you know, if you're carrying over those, plus the, you know, a, a, a traditional on the elements you're going to do in here, that's where, where some of that increase comes in, but certainly, uh.
I, I guess we'll go through it all and then we'll, we'll go there. Let's go through the rest of the pages and we'll go to point four then. Okay. Well, I, I, I don't have a problem of deviating to page twenty-four right now because there is a very robust explanation of the hardtop maintenance operating budget here. If you want to, I mean, I, I, I think that the, the C L has begun to lay it out. Uh, I found the, um, I found the briefing note pretty comprehensive. Um, but does, does, let me just ask the question, do you, you understand why there are?
I got my ear, my headphones on.
By getting somebody trying to jump in here? No? Okay, so, um, do, do you have your explanation for the hundred and sixty-seven thousand? I, I don't have my explanation for a hundred thousand contract, yeah, let's, let's say that. Okay, so, uh, how do we arrive of a hundred thousand of contract patches? Do we go around the township and say, hey, the Safari Street needs this, or Anne Street needs it? How do we arrive at a hundred grand? Okay, then turn the C L to the director, to the superintendent.
Thank, thank you.
Where did the hundred thousand come from?
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll, I'll pass that over to, uh, to Jim or road superintendent to, uh, uh, explain out the, uh, the, the hundred thousand in contract patching.
Yes, thank you, Dave, uh, through, through the mayor, uh, last year, we had, uh, um, uh, looked at around sixty thousand dollars worth of pro, project patching or, or, uh, contract patching, um, to, uh, to try to keep our roads, uh, up to, uh, you know, safe standards of travel. Um, we, we, uh, we included, uh, there was, last year, there was, uh, forty thousand dollars of, of, uh, patching that didn't get done on the list, if you remember the list produced. Uh, the, we, we did only the number one priorities, but there was two and three and four priorities that could have been done as well. Uh, and, uh, then we, so we've, we put them into the, uh, budget, uh, of the hundred thousand. And we've also, uh, uh, left open for, um, X number of more patching, uh, in the, uh, uh, through, through, uh, an inspection after spring breakup. Uh, that's to tell you what, exactly where, right now, I think would be, would be, uh, the wrong direction to go. Uh, because, uh, spring really can put a, uh, can screw up our roads and, and, uh, uh, provide us with, uh, some, some things that we didn't really expect. So, uh, this year will be no different than any other year. So, uh, we, we look, uh, we hope that our, that, uh, you know, a hundred thousand dollars going forward will, uh, help us maintain, uh, the roads that aren't scheduled, uh, in the near future for reconstruction or repaving. Thank you.
So, I, would I be correct in, in saying to Councilor, uh, Dillba, you have not identified specific areas of so many square feet to be packed and come up with a cost of a hundred thousand dollars? You've put in a hundred thousand dollars, and if it's granted, you will place it where you feel is most required. A or B?
Um, I, the, the, uh, what I would, yeah, I'm trying to get your question here, but, uh.
Let me make it clear.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chair, so the hundred thousand is in there, if we're allocated the hundred thousand, we, we will utilize that money on the, what, what the road superintendent turns to be the highest priorities.
That's, that's, okay, it's not the other way around.
It, 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 it is not because, uh, just as the road superintendent indicated, that for spring breakup, there may be a road that we were anticipating that was, was going to be fine and it, it, it.
Priorities, so, so to Councilor Dillba, do you see how this gets worked? Yeah. Okay. All right, so I'm still, go ahead.
Just before we move on, I.
Go ahead.
Thirty-second bathroom.
Oh, I've got a better idea.
Move on, so.
I've got a better idea, I watch at nine o'clock. Do you want, when you say move on, beyond page twelve?
Uh, I, I don't, whatever you can do, but I need a bathroom.
Okay, so five minutes, five minutes, five minutes, break.
We're coming back, we're sorry, I know we wanted to get there quick. No, we're, we're, we're.
So if, 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 if I, if I may, um, let me see if I have this.
Round page twenty-five.
Yep, so, uh, the, the, the one sixty-seven five is the, is the entire line item. Uh, twenty, twenty thousand is a side of that one sixty-seven five for, for light painting. And the one forty-seven, uh, five hundred is, uh, is remaining is, uh, with respect to, to actually practicing the cost. And the six, uh, eighty-six, uh, fifty-two is what our capital, uh, uh, projects for, uh, the, the drive capital projects for twenty-twenty-one. And the six, uh, eight-six, zero, five-two, plus the one sixty-seven, five-hundred. My math is correct, equals the eight hundred. For those of you who haven't gone on, you have done the figure later, and what it was. Uh, it. Your fair, fair, fair enough comment, it, 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 it maybe, uh, could have been, uh, labeled, uh, better.
Okay, I'd like to get moving here, Counselor, or definitely, just one, uh, question in regard to this, this one sixty-seven five. Is it, does that number, or the increase in that number reflect sort of back to the study that we had uh, the last year for preventative on, on the roads to help keep them last, over that period of time that much longer? That, that justification for that, that size?
So, so, to, to the chair, uh, definitely, uh, praxially, et cetera, it's done earlier on to certainly extend the life uh, of, of the road as possible, and then some, some of those patches, if it's just a, uh, a particular bad, uh, part of the, of the road, then you, you can patch that and, you know, extend, extend the life of that, of that road along. Yeah, that's, that has really more, uh, to be, to be, to be.
Okay, I'm moving, I'm gonna move pretty quickly here now, uh, are, are there any questions on page thirteen? You can see the snow falling there, you can see what, what's, what's the, what we budgeted for last year, and what we ended up standing insulting speaks for itself. You all know that this is, that these vary according to weather for the past which are beyond our control, Counselor.
Yes, uh, just a couple of questions, thank you through the chair to, uh, I'm, I'm not sure who this would go to, perhaps the C L will answer, but I'd just like to get your, uh, what is the definition of dust layer? And like the materials for dust layer, what?
What's your line item?
Oh, there's, oh, here it's, oh, third, sorry, thirty, thirty-six, thirty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so that, that's typically for the gravel road, that's the, uh, calcium, uh, chloride or, uh.
Okay. Okay, and the next one I, the next one I have is, uh, with the line item, uh, fifty-six oh seven under street lighting cost, it says budget for five to seven new lights. Where, where have we got about five to seven new lights?
Just replacing old lights, are you not?
Uh, so, so, I will, I will, I will refer to the, to the road superintendent.
Last, in two thousand and twenty, Miss, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, we were, we were able to do two, uh, traffic lights one, uh, down at, uh, Penrose Road Two and Commerce Drive, uh, during that period, there was another, uh, request for lights up at Sophia, we weren't able to get to. Uh, and, uh, then the budget is there for any other requests, uh, the remaining part of the budget is there for any other requests that we may get, or council may choose to, uh, have us investigate to see if the, we can put lighting in, in any locations that you're looking for. So that is, that is new streetlights added to the system.
New, new poles, new, new fixtures added to the system?
Correct.
All, all, so, so, through, through the chair, depending, depending on the location and being required, the pole and new light, or there may be an opportunity in certain spots.
Okay, but it's a new fixture, it's a, it's a new fixture. All right, anybody else, any questions with page thirteen?
No.
All right, moving on, page fourteen, any questions with page fourteen?
I do.
Yes, go ahead, it's a small one, uh, Judy Place nineteen grand, and then twenty-twenty-one forty-three, how come so much difference in one year?
Uh, through, through the chair to Counselor Dillaw, uh, that's an increase, uh, number one, we got caught last year, if you remember, on, on, uh, our unit rates being low, I've corrected that. And also, this is a, uh, a, uh, also a correction because, uh, it, that's an isolated, uh, street now. It, it, it has, it's, uh, doesn't have any other streets working around it to help the cost and the unit rates, so I've increased the budget accordingly, uh, to, uh, provide for that, for that, uh, capital, uh, project to, uh, to, uh, continue at, at a budget, uh, uh, at a budget rate.
Thank you, any other questions with page fourteen? Moving to page fifteen, done. We've discussed these before, Edison Avenue, Commerce Drive, First Street, we've discussed them, and we've got some money going to spend on a lot of the road. Okay, so, I think we've had a full discussion there, the understanding is that these numbers will all go forward to the next draft of the budget. Do I have a, do we, uh, do we have consensus on that? These are the numbers that are going forward to the next draft. All right, now I'm going to go to, we've discussed page sixteen. Well, sixteen provides the, the, the detail for Edison Avenue, and you see, can you see the diagram? Nineteen is, uh, capital equipment budget, explains the replacement of the one ton multi-purpose truck P two, and, and explains the purchase of the brush head attachment to the Volvo high. Are there any questions on page nineteen? Okay, we all understand that, all right, and page twenty is the, uh, replacement of the truck, and they make it very clear that they're gonna buy the truck with the box, excuse me, with the cab and the frame, and, uh, they're going to, uh, move that newly constructed box off the existing truck onto the new cabin chassis. All right, no questions there? On page, on page twenty-two, you get the detail for the hardtop resurfacing projects on Anne Street, First Street, and Judy Place, that the superintendent just talked about, and Commerce Drive and Rooney Road. And on page twenty-four, we've already had some discussion around the hardtop maintenance, and understanding the difference between hardtop maintenance and where we replace the full road, such as you see on page twenty-two and twenty-three. All right, so, we have an understanding then that those are the numbers that are going to the next draft of the budget. Do I get a nodding heads around that? Okay, not getting any heads, nodding. Okay, so I'm gonna move on, page twenty-six is the draft storm water management budget. Uh, and, uh, the storm, looking at the briefing note, the twenty-twenty-one storm water capital project budget is three hundred and fourteen thousand, and proposes three major projects, Johnstown, Conal Road, and Spencerville. And we've talked about all of these, and you can see that no transfers from the reserve are included in the draft twenty-twenty-one budget. The pre-budget, pre-audited balance, uh, of December the thirty-first in that account will be eighty-four thousand, almost gone. A transfer of fifteen thousand is included in the draft budget, now to the treasurer, is that fifteen thousand going in? Because your previous sentence, no transfers from, makes it clear that there's nothing coming out, so I'm assuming that the fifteen thousand is going in, is that, is that correct?
Yes, through the chair, the fifteen thousand is going in.
Okay, and we see that on page twenty-eight, right? Those are the transfers to, that line item fifty-nine oh one, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so we understand what's happening there, and then if we go to the side of page fifty-eight, then your Conal project is coming forward from twenty-twenty. Spencerville drainage is five, three hundred thousand, and Conal storm pipe lining is forty-five thousand. So, pipe that's gonna be lined, has been to be the most effective way of dealing with that, and Johnstown drainage is showing in, uh, uh, engineering only. But I have a question there, and by the way, a different question to the treasurer, please, I just wanna get this correct. On page twenty-eight, at line item fifty-seven five nine five zero, it says storm sewer capital, is that not storm water capital? Does that not be storm water? I don't have storm sewers.
Mr. Chair, it, it typically, it would be a storm sewer. They're, they're called storm sewers.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. We can, we can have storm sewer, we're.
Oh, I got you, okay, all right, all right, so that explains that, now, um, well, I'm on page twenty-eight, and when I'm, uh, looking, well, let me, uh, let me just see where I am here, uh, totally. Uh, so twenty-eight is the storm water management budget, and it pretty much ends on page twenty-eight, right?
Yep.
And there's no. Those are the numbers that will be going in the next draft of the budget. Now I'm. One, twenty-nine, not? And, yes, in page twenty-nine, I'm starting the Spencerville storm water capital project. And on page twenty-nine, when I go to thirty, I, the page, yes, now just a minute, I gotta get myself right here. When I go to thirty, I have a recommendation, the committee recommends that council give pre-budget approval to undertake the engineering design and begin phase one of the Spencerville drainings project to an upset limit of a hundred and fifty thousand. So, that's the recommendation, and there is a, uh, a, a full presentation here uh, from the engineering firm, Merckell, and they outline the scope of their work for engineering design. So, I have a couple of questions before I open the floor. The first thing is, uh, were other firms asked to vote here? Or is this a response, is this a response for a request for proposals?
So, through, through, through the chair, uh, it, it was a, it was a quote, and, and actually, uh, that is not the, the updated quote, the updated quote is, uh, it's about, uh, eleven thousand dollars at a last.
Okay, but the essence of my question was, was this a, a response for quotations? What's not, it was not, it was not, so, how did we come about this?
It was done by, uh, a question for quotation.
Well, so it was a, we did request a quotation, we did. Didn't we, didn't we request of other firms?
Of, of, of multiple firms, we didn't talk.
Okay, so it's a single source?
Uh, it, it, it is because the, the, uh, the, the act, and the, the, the final proposal is, is under, uh, under the twenty thousand, which requires one quote.
Okay, fair enough, so we have a single source quote, okay, and, and the final price you're saying is eleven thousand? I've got a hundred and fifty, no?
Well, it, so, so the, that is, uh, the, 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 the engineering for phase, I believe, one and two, uh, it, it's about eighteen or nineteen thousand, and the rest of that, uh, up to a hundred and fifty thousand would be to, to, uh, it, uh, is physically on site and doing, doing, doing the work.
Okay, so here's my question with regard to this, and I, I wanna get this out. So, on the, on the, the, the quotation sheet that I have in front of me, which is on page forty-nine, I've got phase one, which is preliminary design, cost coming in at twenty thousand seven forty-five. And then phase two, which is detailed design, cost comes in at twenty-nine five ten, total is fifty thousand two fifty-five.
So, so, if I may, Mr. Chair, so, uh, you have the, on phase, uh, one, comes in at around, uh, ten thousand dollars, uh, and phase two comes in at eight thousand seven sixty-five.
Eight, eights?
Yeah, so you're looking at the subtotal, right, the total of twenty-nine thousand is, is, or both incorporates phase one and three.
Got you, I got you, I missed that completely. And, and my question is, and I just wanna point it out, so on phase two, which is the eight thousand seven hundred.
Yes.
That includes the tender packages.
That is correct.
Including quantities, specifications, cost estimates, and schedule.
That is correct.
So we get the tender packages with this package.
That is correct.
Okay, so does everybody understand what we're gonna be buying here? And by the way, do you have then the final number, Mr. The Mr. C L?
Uh, I, 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 I believe it's, uh, eighteen thousand and something forty.
Okay, eighteen X X X.
I, 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 I'm not sure if the Director of Operations adds that number on, on hand or not.
Okay, what we're being asked to do here, we're being asked to give free budget approval to get this design and the tender package underway, and then expand up to a hundred and fifty thousand on execution.
Correct, so if, 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 if I made it, it's clarified a little bit more, and, and, and I think it's specified in the, uh, it's a little bit in the background, um, as much as we would like to, to, to look at completing the, the, the drainage upgrades and pave that, 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 that area, uh, we're anticipating that it will likely be, uh, extremely difficult to complete in one, in one year. Uh, it, it will probably be, uh, two years, but I think, like, right now, what we'd like to do is get that, uh, get the design and, 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 and the estimates and everything, get it to tender and, and get, uh.
Get started.
Get started, and, and then come back to, to, uh, council as soon as possible to, to, to sort of get a better, uh, cost estimate number.
Okay, now, the tender package that we've got here does not include, uh, the con, the consultant helping us through the tender process. It just includes preparing the tender package.
Uh, it, it does not include full contract administration, but, but, but they certainly will, uh, receive the, uh, the, the, the tender and, and, and review and staff.
Okay, all right, leading to the recommendation.
Leading to the recommendation.
Fair enough, okay, everybody understands what we're doing here?
Yep.
Okay, everybody understand where is the money coming from? Draft budget proposes a transfer of fifteen thousand into the reserve and nothing out of the reserve. So where is the money coming from?
Taxation.
Taxation, everybody understand? Okay, any question? Hearing none, I'm about to move on, and I hesitate to point out that we've completed the agenda. I really hesitated because I know most people would rather stay longer, but as for me, I'm going home. Yes, I see the clerk one here, we miss you.
Sorry, sorry, through the chair, um, we do have a recommendation on the Spencerville storm water capital project. Are we looking to, uh, move forward with that recommendation, shake?
Well, I'm in such a hurry, that I'm glad you brought me back to reality. You're right, there is a recommendation there.
Page, page thirty.
And I, I was kind of hoping that somebody would jump in and say, I, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the recommendation, but I didn't see that happen.
Here.
Okay, Counselor Hunter, you're slow, but you're here.
Uh, you're moving the pass or?
So, uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, so is that gonna be taxation of a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
No, it's gonna be taxation of a hundred and fifty thousand.
But we got that fifteen thousand.
So, so fifteen thousand is being transferred in the reserve?
Okay, oh, so we're not using, okay.
We're not using that.
So it's a full pop, hundred and fifty?
It's a, it's a full hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, any further discussion on the recommendation?
Yeah, yes.
No further discussion, I'm about to call a question, those in favor? Most is carried. All right, now I'm like three to call, Miss, Miss Clerk.
We're on the number, item six.
Are there any inquiries or notices of motion? Hearing none, there's no mayor's report, mayor's looking for the motion to adjourn. I can do that, I have Counselor Dillaw moving, seconded by Counselor Cameron, those in favor?